Good morning. It's October 8th. Time for our regular board meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call will show that all commissioners are present. First item we have on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Board members, do you have any corrections or additions or deletions to the agenda? Or Mike, do you have anything from administration? Don't. If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, second. Commissioner Notch, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Next item we have is public forum. Okay, anyone wishing to speak at the public forum this morning? Anybody wishing to speak today? Last chance. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Board members, we have items one through five on the consent agenda. Any of those items that board members would like to pull, otherwise we'll look for a motion to approve all five items. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, second. Commissioner Clark, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. The next item, we'll move right on to the public hearings. We have the first public hearing today, which is about our pool ordinance. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Shelley Benton, Environmental Services Director. We have two public hearings for you today. The first one is related to the pool ordinance, and Mark Lateral, Supervisor over Environmental Health, is here to go through that item with you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'll begin on page 20, item D1. The purpose of this item is for the board to conduct a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 591, which is a replacement to the current pool, public pool ordinance number 503. The county board directed us to hold a public meeting, a public hearing this morning back on September 10th. And a little background, the current public pool ordinance 503 was last updated in 2017. The purpose of this ordinance will reflect clarification of the language intent, consolidation of ordinance sections with an overall format restructured to match other county current, current county ordinances, clarify, simplify, and increase the department efficiency, reduce the penalty burdens of licensees as they operate in the Stearns County, and provide better appeals direction to the licensees. Both the Minnesota Department of Health and the County Attorney's Office have reviewed this draft and given approval on it. The public hearing notice was published in newspaper on September 24th, and we also made this information available on the county website for anyone interested to view it. I did not receive any correspondence regarding this, so I have nothing to share with you. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would turn this back over to you with a recommendation to conduct the public hearing and ask the board to approve the new ordinance.
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
So do, if with, if these changes get adopted, does the letter go out to any, everyone that does get inspected and letting them know what the changes are? Yep, we certainly can do that. I was curious. We, I think, I think when 503 was last updated, that wasn't the case, and there was some unknown by the licensees that we had new pool ordinance, and they weren't necessarily aware of the changes, per se. So I think what we can do is, as we send out the licenses for 2020, give information to the pool licensees and let them know that a new ordinance has been adopted. We can direct them to the county website for review of the information. It would be a good thought to do that. Yeah, because even bullet pointing the changes so that they could say, oh, okay, is there, it would help.
That's a good question, Steve. So, Mark, when would these go into effect then? Under the new year or after we adopt?
It would be upon adoption and publication.
Okay, because if they wouldn't receive it, they would not have any, they would not be aware of the changes. So would they necessarily be liable?
I, I can't see the department holding anyone liable for the last two months of the year, or, you know, before a license change would go and the information would go. Really, any of the changes that are in the new proposed ordinance actually give benefit to the, to the licensees, especially like the penalty, the licensure's late penalty fee. If we put that in place now, we can actually get that in as we're working through our renewals, which are occurring right now. So, so it'd be, it'd be a benefit to have it in place sooner.
Okay, all right.
What problem, real or imagined, are we solving?
With the changes? One of the, one of the largest changes, like I said, was the penalty fee burden. If you were late with your license renewal, it was an automatic two times the penalty fee. And if you recall, Mr. Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, back when we adopted the food ordinance earlier this year, we had restructured that penalty format into a delayed tiered structure. So it wasn't an automatic two times the penalty, or two times the license fee for a penalty. It was licenses were due, and, and now the way the format would work is, is licenses are due December 1st, our license renewals. Penalties would not kick in until January 1st, and it would be at a certain dollar, a lower dollar amount. And then 30 days later, there'd be a second tier. It would ratchet up. So that was one of the, the large changes for our food ordinance, and we wanted to direct also pull that into the pool ordinance and all of the environmental health ordinances that have a penalty associated with late licensures, submittals.
The technical aspects of the ordinance don't change?
No.
Just the penalty aspect of it?
Yeah. And then, and a large reformat, one of the goals of myself as the supervisor in environmental health, as we work our way through the, all the environmental health ordinances, is to give them all the same look and feel, give the user a more common approach to using our county ordinances and finding the information in it. So the restructuring in the format is, is a huge change for this as well. So it brings it in line with our food ordinance, along with our sewer and zoning ordinance, too, so.
In recent history on violations?
I can't think of any.
Had the late fee.
We had, we had one, one applicant last year that had a late fee levied. That was probably our last real confrontation regarding the pool ordinance. Otherwise, it flows along quite smoothly, actually.
What triggers staff concerns over changes like this?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What triggers staff, staff concerns over changes like this?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think the biggest issue is consistency in trying to get our ordinances the same. If we levied the penalty in one ordinance in one way, and then we levied it differently in another ordinance, that was the biggest concern, which is what was expressed last year at the beginning of the year when the pool ordinance had the same penalty structure. And when we modified the food code, we said, well, we should be modifying the pool ordinance as well to, to do that, because we wanted some consistency. So I think that's the biggest issue on staff's side of this. Let's be consistent throughout our ordinances. It makes it easier for everyone.
Thank you. Okay. I have a couple of questions, but I'll wait till after the public hearing. So I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify on the pool ordinance changes? Anyone wishing to testify on the pool ordinance changes? I don't know if we should go out to the foyer and see if there's anybody out there, but if not, last chance. Anybody wishing to testify today on the pool ordinance? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, we'll continue discussion. Any questions? Terrell?
I just, I wanted to thank staff for, the readability of this is, I think, enhanced. I, the, trying to have ordinances conforming with each other in terms of format, I think, is a useful thing. But there, I think the other thing you did is, some of it is in a bit plainer language, making it easier for somebody who's utilizing this to actually find what they're looking for. So thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, yeah, and I, too, I agree. Having spent a lot of time in my profession in the pool area with the kids, I got a few questions, and also I'm very interested in making sure that our pools are safe and appropriately maintained. And you did a nice job cleaning up the language. A couple of questions I do have on 6.4, the non-transferable of license. It says license shall not be transferred from one public pool or person to another public pool or person. Yeah, I, I understand that's the policy, but how will we follow up on that? So for example, we have a, a change of hands on a hotel, and so I just want to make sure that for them, it's fairly seamless, but also yet safe for the public. So would we, when would we do the inspection on that in order for them to have a new contract?
Typically, on change of hands, we either find it on license renewal, like this time of year. I mean, a business may be bought and sold. We may not be notified. We might catch it at the end of the year when we do our renewals. At that point in time, we work with the new owner to get, if, if it's a hotel, it could involve a lodging license as well, you know, in the pool. It may have a food license with it as well. So we work with them then to get it all transitioned over into the new, new entities names, so.
Right. And then, if it would require a new inspection, then, let's say it happens in October, November or so, rather than having to do a first of the year inspection, would we allow that then to be the inspection for the following year as well?
Typically, that's not been the process, because of when we transfer licenses, any of the outstanding orders for an entity need to be resolved before we can issue a new license to the, to the new entity. So we would conduct, we do the transfer, we would conduct an inspection at that time to make sure all the old orders were resolved. We'd issue the license. Then at that point, we'd get them on the calendar for the next year, next calendar year, and do a, do an annual inspection at that time as well, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking from a practical standpoint, rather if somebody was to take a, hands of a place in November or so, that they, we don't do an inspection in November, then do one in January 1, or January, okay, so that it makes sense that, you know, we're doing what's appropriate, but not necessarily doing too much work that, that, you know, it bothers both parties.
Sure, understood.
Okay. And then, of course, it would be prorated, as I understand, the licenses aren't prorated, correct?
That is not correct, Commissioner Persky. The prorations have been removed, as they were with the food and beverage ordinance. The, we have the fee, the, the work that staff does isn't changed, and that was the discussion we had when we, when we worked through the food and beverage ordinance. The amount of work and effort that the county puts in to get this done, it doesn't change whether the, an entity opens or changes hands at the beginning of the year, halfway through, or three quarters of the way through. And, and like the food and beverage, food ordinance that was passed, those provisions for prorations have been removed out of this. And actually, our county fee structure doesn't allow for any kind of prorated fees either, so.
Along with what Commissioner Persky has. Okay, so there's an inspection in November, with change of hands, let's say, then the following one wouldn't be till January of 2021. Is that correct? Or are you going to have one in January 2020?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Morgan, it depends on when that was licensed. So if it was licensed in November, we did that inspection, you have another year, so the following November. We wouldn't necessarily be looking ahead of that year unless there was an outstanding order issue or a complaint, pool chemistry. We've had that where people have complained, oh, it's, I went there, the chlorine was too strong. We go, we take a look at it. So unless it's triggered by a complaint, we don't do another inspection until a year later.
Okay, so it's not January 1st?
No.
It's their date of issue?
Correct. So, or, we, we work within the schedule that the inspectors have. It's not always annually.
Yeah. Inspections are driven by the risk rating of the entity, and pools are all rated as a high-risk category entity. So the Department of Health requires us to do an inspection once a year on those. Every once, every 12 months, we need to be there. There's high-risk, medium-risk, low-risk categories, and they can waiver in timeframes. But pools are considered high-risk, so it's an annual inspection.
Okay, so, so I'm going to come back to my question then. As far as it being prorated, it wouldn't be prorated, but unlike the restaurants, where they're not licensed for a calendar year, they're licensed for 12 months from when they have their inspection or when their first license, correct?
No, licenses are annual.
But we only inspect annually. So you remember, we have a lot of facilities. We can't inspect everything in January.
Right.
So the inspectors have it divided, and then they do their various inspections as they get to them throughout the course of the year. But we would not inspect twice on one entity unless we had a complaint.
Okay. I guess I have, I have a little bit of trouble, again, taking out the prorated. If we're going to have somebody coming in at the end of the year that wants to operate a hotel, everything is fine, the pool is fine, there's, and it's seamless, but then we're going to charge them a new annual fee, and then allow them to operate for one or two months, and then, starting January 1, they're going to have to be paying a new annual fee as well. I guess I have a little trouble with that. And I, I thought the prorated actually made it rather fair and business-friendly. I don't know if anyone else on the board has the same feeling.
But if you're saying a lot of times you don't catch these until the renewals come up, you probably, that's probably a minor chance of that happening, I would think. Because a lot of times, they said that the lodging, food, and the pool, you know, if
Because a lot of times they said that the lodging, food and the pool, you know, if they don't, if they don't know, they have to come to the county and get relicensed, they might not show up until the permit comes up.
Yeah, but then they've been in violation. Because they're operating without a license, because it's null and void once the new owner takes their hands of the operation.
Okay, so.
Yeah. See, and, you know, that puts public safety into question.
So you're saying if, if somebody takes over December 1st, they're gonna pay the fee?
An annual fee for 12 months for these, all of December.
Well, they're due in December, right?
They're due in December for the next year, correct?
For the next year.
Yeah, so if they take over December 1st, they're gonna pay for next year?
No.
Or you're gonna make them pay twice?
Currently, based on the non-proration, it would be twice. You pay for your, your, the current year they're in and then the form, the next year.
How often does it happen?
Infrequently.
Very infrequently, to be honest.
Right, and that's why even with that, I just think business fair, I would rather see it be prorated, in my own opinion.
So can you talk a little bit more then? Let's, just, just make sure we're all understanding the same thing in terms of the process, in terms of the cost to the county, as well as the cost to the business. Okay, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, I think the clearest way to say it is if we have proration, or if we don't have proration, then they would be charged at the point where they change their licensure from one entity to another, they would pay. So if it's in July, they pay the July, that finishes them through the end of that year, and then they get their renewal, they pay again for the next year. And that, if you're not, if you're prorating it, that would be different. Um, we would look at only half of the year or the one quarter of the year in the payment. Now, the same exact cost goes into it, whether it's the full year, or it's the half, or the quarter, or the three quarters of a year. So at that point, the, the cost to the county is the same on the change, whether it's prorated, or proration is reducing that, so you are subsidizing if you prorate, because our costs stay the same. We don't do something different, we don't do three quarters of an inspection because it's three quarters of the year. We do a full inspection, we do, the process is the same, we change all the licensure. So that cost stays the same for the county. And just for the public, can you talk about what the cost of the license is?
I'm gonna look to Mark on that one because I don't think I can articulate all the pieces of that.
I know that it could be and it depends, but I think it's helpful to know what we're really talking about. Um, and, and certainly a lot of what we do, we're subsidizing the cost regardless. I don't know if that's the case with this license, but it is important to note that county taxpayers pay whatever the rest of it is.
However, however, the business that is forfeiting or, or changing hands, they've already paid for a full year and they would not be getting credit for the full year, even if, if they, if.
That's why I'm wondering what the cost is. I don't know what we're talking about. Are we talking about $300? Are we talking about $3,000? Are we talking, what are we talking?
I would have to go back and look at the fee schedule. Um, when we did that information two years ago, uh, we looked at all of those costs and we had them all on that spreadsheet. So I'd have to go back and take a look at that to tell you exactly what the cost of that particular licensure was. We do have it worked out, um, from, that would have been two years ago. I don't think it would have changed, but I do not have that with me at this time.
Okay. I'm sorry, just one, one last question with it. So, and then I think I heard you saying that we've been eliminating proration in other places.
That's correct.
Can you talk a little bit more about that? Just from a policy standpoint, the, is the policy, the thought again for the public purely that the cost is the cost is the cost? Or is it something else?
It's been the cost. So that was the issue that we saw, that it didn't change how we did our business. We did the same thing, whether it was at the beginning of the year, end of the year. Um, so we didn't think it was fair to the public, so that's why.
And I'm sorry, I guess I did have one last thing, because I think most of this is really straightforward. This is one of those pieces that's a change and I don't know whether or not, I'd hate to have us postpone the vote on this for, till the next meeting, but it might be helpful to know, what are the costs incurred to the county? Um, how many are we really talking about? What is the impact really of us eliminating this proration? Um, because I think to your point, I mean, obviously, it's hard in those, it sounds like rare instances, but is it truly rare, if, in a rare instance, that somebody's coming up at the end of the year or not? And, and Commissioner Knox may have a, a, a more informative point on that.
Well, you can look at it the other way too. The seller then should get a refund, but, I mean, how deep into the weeds do you go? Does this cover city-owned pool, is this every pool in Stearns County?
Every public pool.
Every public pool campground in the city limits?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, just so I have this right. Okay, the original owners have already paid for a pool inspection for that current year, right?
Correct.
Now they're selling it and now the, whether it's November or whatever, or Jan-, February, another inspection is required?
A new, a full new licensure would be required, is what we're saying, yes.
Okay, so let's say the original owners had it inspected in January, they sell it in February. At that point, an additional one inspection is required and to be paid for again?
I'm gonna look to Mark on that because I don't know if we do an inspection at that point.
The transfer of license, uh, license, the transfer to license, the establishment would require another application fee be paid. You're correct there. The inspection would, uh, before we would transfer the license, we will need to ensure that any outstanding orders that were identified previously have been resolved. So it may, uh, staff may end up going out there to confirm that these orders have been corrected. And then, and after we do that, we can then issue the permit to the new owner.
I'm under the feeling that one inspection a year is enough. You know, just because it transfers ownership, the pool doesn't change.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Morgan, I think it's the initial paperwork and the process that has to be done anytime it changes. And this, our, this ordinance change doesn't change that requirement. I mean, the transfer, we, we weren't, we're currently not allowing transfers and we would still not be required, um, be permitting them. So then, there is all that initial startup. Yeah, I mean, it feels a little burdensome and I don't know where that originally came from, besides it being another check against in case there's, there's an issue. And I don't know if that's a state requirement or if that's ours.
Commissioner Morgan, to your point, I, because of public safety, I, I have no trouble with a new inspection. And it, and it might be just a very quick inspection, okay? But be- because a new owner is taking place, there might be renovation within the building. They may have done things or want to be doing things. And so, again, that quick, that, then inspection. The concern I have is that, again, the original, uh, owner has paid for an annual amount, they're not getting that refunded. They're coming in and they're getting a partial year, but they're gonna have to pay for a full year and somebody's already paid for that full year.
And just to throw a monkey, you know, whatever, the monkey wrench in, is the county is still gonna have to pay for the time of our staff, no matter what. So even in that, we, we still have to, and I don't know what our numbers are, but that's a pretty significant cost back to taxpayers in this scenario.
But there is a fee being paid.
Well, if we, if there isn't, I mean, if we're prorating, we're still, no, if, so that's where, it's still, we still have 100% of the cost, no matter when this transfer happens. And I believe that's the reason, policy reason for not prorating. Um, certainly smart moves would, would say, hey, do this at a particular point in the year. But we still have the same cost whenever the transfer happens. We don't have a prorated cost.
It would be similar if you bought a car today and paid the transfer fee and the sales tax and then sold it next month. They're gonna collect the transfer fee and the sales tax again, because it's the same principle.
Yeah, but the plates wouldn't expire.
Well, they could, if they come due next month.
Yep.
You paid for them for a whole year, but you only use it for 10 months, you should get two months back, right? But that doesn't happen.
But they, but the new owner gets the benefit of those two months?
Right.
Okay, the new owner's not getting the benefit of the pool.
Again, I think we, we've gotta look at the, who's paying the cost. I mean, there's a cost, so who's paying the cost, the business or others?
Mr. Chair, we can certainly postpone and bring back information so you guys have it, so that you're clear about how many prorations we've had, um, the numbers, um, of pools that we are dealing with, what does an actual license fee cover, and have that information all available to you.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. And, and I think it may be we should think about that. Uh, you know, we do get criticism about not being business friendly, oftentimes from the public. They say, you know, there's so many hoops to jump through and that, you know, we, we wanna be a little more friendly to encourage, uh, transfers to take place. But of course, public safety is a, is a concern, especially in this situation. Um, but there were a couple of other concerns. Let's go through if there are any other concerns about the ordinance.
Just because you wanna finish up with this point. We've got a balance. There's a balance of burden and benefit. You know, there's, and frankly, the cost probably gets put on to the people who are gonna use the pool. So, I mean, who's paying the cost? There's no such thing as a free licensure. So how are we, how are we doing that? It's, so it's not just a safety issue, it's just, we're gonna have, the cost is incurred, so who does it over that course? And, you know, you think about it from a business standpoint too. You know, part of what we're trying to do is keep our property taxes down. We're trying to make sure that we've got good roads, et cetera. And if you're transferring it, as you're buying something, you're going to put in those costs as part of what your cost of doing the business is. So I just, again, you know, if we're, if we're, we could make this zero on it, but then we have to recognize that it's our, it's all of our other taxpayers that are gonna cover it. So you said you had a couple of them?
Okay, I, I was just gonna say, but, but the, the annual fee might have already covered those costs to begin with?
No, because remember, it's the transfer, they have to go, they have to do a new license, they have to do all the work for the new license. That doesn't transfer. So the cost is still there. Forget the inspection for a second, the cost of the work to do the new license is still there.
So if they don't pay it, the taxpayers basically subsidize it?
Or, or if, if the cost of the license, okay, that you're, you're purchasing includes additional inspections, if that's figured in the, in the amount that you're paying.
Then we'd have to look at upping the fee of the license.
Or maybe it's already up there, to cover it.
But remember that, forget the inspection for a second. This is all of the work about a new entity coming in that the, that staff has to do. So we'd have to get rid of the non-transferability clause. That, that's a way you could do it, but I don't know that we can do that. But that's theoretically, forget the legal part of it, but that's the other thing you can do.
And just, just one point is, our fees never cover 100% of the cost.
No.
So, and we do, we do prorate liquor license fees, for instance, but it's a little different animal than what you have here.
Okay, uh, since we're gonna bring this back, any other questions? I had another one and that was, I, I put it on the, uh, the document. Now I'm going back to the document, I can't find it. So, but I'll try to, I'll try to explain it to which one I am. It's about the penalty. And what I, what I'm concerned about again is the seriousness of the pool safety and, and about negligence. So that, uh, I, I don't want it to be that the, uh, pool is in violation only after an inspection, that the pool is in violation even prior to an inspection. And so if there's negligence involved, that that will be enforced and there will be a penalty if, if, if that, if that happens. So for example, if you're doing pool maintenance and you forget to put, and you don't put your, uh, drain cover on the inlet back on, and you knowingly know that that's not there, I mean, really, that's gross negligence. And if we have an incident where somebody get, drowns because they get sucked in by that, that, they, they should be liable. So if we find that condition, I think there should be a penalty. If you've got giardia or if you've got E. coli in your water and you don't do something about it, okay, I think that should, you know, there should be a penalty. But is that, is that spelled out in the ordinance? If you, if you have, uh, if you did not secure your diving board, you didn't tighten the bolts on it and you know that those things aren't, is that spelled out?
Mr. Chair, I think there's a couple of things. One, the people who are running their pool would definitely have that liability on them. However, if we inspected it and found that it was in compliance, we have no reason to believe it would become out of compliance because they're following proper procedure. If it is out of compliance, that's one of the reasons we go back, is to check to make sure those things are done. Um, we don't, if the pool chemistry is wrong, we have shut pools down. If they don't have their cover, we shut them down. If they don't have, operating correctly, we shut them down. It does not make them happy, they get them corrected immediately because that's a business issue for them. People want to go to a place that has their pool open. So that has happened where we've shut them down and we have gone out several times to make sure things are correct. But that's exactly what we do, is shut them down when we know. If someone gets sick, then we go through the process and they figure it's the pool, then we have to go through a whole process, um, for that.
There are, there are no financial penalties that staff can levy as, as, is that what you were suggesting, Commissioner?
But didn't I look at the language? Wasn't there a thousand dollar fine for, uh, non-compliance?
Is that in the old? That, I believe, um, I believe you're referring to section 15, the criminal penalties?
Yes.
Where it speaks to, um, any person or firm or corporation violates any provisions of this ordinance, or who fails or neglects or refuses to comply with the provisions of this ordinance, including violations of conditions or safeguards, or who knowingly makes any false statement or knowingly omission in any document required to be submitted under the provision herefor, hereof, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine not to exceed a thousand dollars, or by imprisonment, or not to exceed 90 days, or both. Each day is, uh, each day that a violation exists shall constitute a separate offense. Mr. Chair, I can tell you, that's, that's standard language, that's in virtually all of our ordinances.
Okay, so, so, so it is there?
That's there.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Chair, the issue is, we would have to be in an enforcement mode, so we have sent it up to the attorney's office, they've taken, we've gone to court, we've gone through a process. Um, it's an, it's an option for us. We typically don't go down this path. We try to get compliance in other ways before we go down the criminal, um, penalty side of this.
Correct. And, and my point being is, uh, again, on, on the, uh, area of public safety, um, so that, so that it is known that we treat these, uh, conditions very seriously. So if you have a gated pool and you, you are, have that pool operating and you have the gate down, that's in violation. Okay, I wanna prevent a drowning. Okay, and so I would say, according to this, according to this language, they would be in violation and then be held liable, is that correct?
We would have to go through a process to go through, to get that. It's not that we just get to impose the thousand dollar fine.
No, I, I agree.
Right. So if we went through criminal litigation and they were fined, that could be a thousand dollars per day for each day that that was fine existed. Our, our job is to make sure we're inspecting. If there's a complaint, we go out and investigate the complaint and we address it. And typically, our pool owners wanna get it into compliance as quickly as possible. So we don't typically have to go down this path, criminal penalty.
Right. The strongest, excuse me, the strongest action any of our inspectors have at the time they're doing their inspection is to close a pool. There are certain criteria that if they, they come across one of these safety issues, they can automatically close a pool and keep it closed until it's resolved.
Yeah. What, what I'm concerned about is, I'm concerned about, um, the, a, a condition where they wanna say, well, we can get by for so many days, you know, it's gonna get taken care of, rather than saying, no, we're not gonna have the pool open and, and keep it closed to the public when there is perhaps a safety violation. But the, they know the county's not gonna come by in the next three days, but yet they're gonna put the public at risk because they don't see a necessarily immediate need because no one's made a complaint, nobody's concerned about it. That's, that's my concern. If we have it spelled out that they're in violation, that they could be prosecuted because of that, there would be a greater awareness and sense for themselves to make the correction rather than to just wait until, well, we got a repair person coming in at two days and then wait and do it at that time. That's my concern. Okay?
But the pool would be shut down, correct, if?
It should be shut down. But my point is, what if they operate?
Well, that's, any business can do that. It can almost micromanaging each event.
But it is, but it would be in violation. But it is, but it would be in violation.
You want us to pass up an opportunity to micromanage, Steve?
Yeah.
Come on. Jeez.
Well, we don't want to hire any more staff.
All right. Let's, we better, let's get on to the rest of this. Pool ordinance was supposed to take a little bit of time. But well, are you going to bring it back to us then?
Yes, we will bring it back.
Any other concerns about the ordinance? If not, we'll move on to the next public hearing.
The next one is related to a request for a shoreline contractor's license for JK Landscape. Angie Berg is here to present that item.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Annie.
Angie Berg, Environmental Services. In front of you today is a public hearing to consider the status of a shoreline contractor license for JK Landscaping. On August 20th, the Board voted to schedule a public hearing for today. As is indicated in Section 420 of the zoning ordinance, a license issued under the ordinance is, can be brought to the Board for cause. In this case, there was work being done on a permit in, that was issued in 2018. Work occurred on the property by the contractor, and the site was left largely without any erosion control for approximately one month. And so, this, not to confuse things, but the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider CUP on the same property, of which was denied. The Board also denied that permit. And at that time, the Planning Commission suggested that the Department bring this item to you for consideration, for revocation or discussion of the contractor license. I have not received anything in writing for the public hearing, and Jerry is the contractor and here representing himself. So, Mr. Chair, the, the procedure would be to conduct the public hearing, and you can basically decide if there's cause for revocation, suspension, or leave the license in place. As you probably remember, throughout the years, you've had several public hearings for considering revocation. Typically, a warning is issued, this being the warning. And we haven't had someone come back a second time.
Questions before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone testifying on the licensure of the contractor here today? Anyone testing, wanting to testify on the revocation of the license of the contractor here today? Anybody want to talk about the pool ordinance? Last chance to, anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
But doesn't Jerry, doesn't the contractor speak now during the public hearing?
Jerry, did you want to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to how this all is shaking out because, I mean, I think you guys are all well, well aware that I did not pull the permit. I mean, had I known, I should back up a little bit. So, I was asked to install a project that was already approved by Stearns County. Somebody else pulled the permit, not myself. And being a licensed contractor, the customer, the homeowner called me and asked me to do it. I said, absolutely. It was building a few boulder walls, doing a little grading and shaping and, and a few miscellaneous things, and it was already approved. So, why wouldn't I? So, I took it on, we started doing it, and then we basically were fairly well, fairly far along when 4th of July hit. I mean, pretty much all that was left was spreading a little bit of Class II granite and a little black dirt seed and blanket. So, there was very minimal left. All the walls were built. We had a pretty nasty rain event over that weekend. I think we had four inches in a matter of a couple hours, and there was a lot of washing out. The homeowner got excited, called the county right away, and wanted to put in more retaining walls. And I let him know that there's more than likely they're not going to approve it, but he wanted to do it anyway. So, between Dave Net, Nick Newman, they decided to push them towards the CUP. And he, the homeowner asked if I wanted to take care of that for him. I said, absolutely not, because I already know what the outcome's going to be. I said, you're on your own on that. And I tried multiple times to persuade Mr. Faye to, let's just grade this out. We can make it work the way it is. Let's seed and blanket. You're missing out on a growing season for your lawn. He chose to prolong this. And actually, over the 4th, you know, when he, after he talked to Dave Net, you know, the 8th or whatever it was of July, he said, well, you can come grab your equipment. I don't want you doing any more work on my property till we get this resolved. So, I was asked to leave. I mean, not in a mean fashion, but I, he just said, I don't want you doing any more work here till we get this figured out with the county. I said, sure. Nick contacted me, I think, twice during this timeframe and said, hey, your erosion control is not, you know, you got to take care of this. I sent guys out there. We put up a second row of silt fence because the first one had kind of silted over it. So, we went out and put up a second row of silt fence. And I just, I mean, I didn't know what else we needed to do. The project wasn't done. I mean, I'm aware of, you got X amount of days to put erosion control in place. However, the homeowner, Nick, Dave, whoever from the county, they had, they, they were talking amongst themselves as far as this other permit. I wasn't involved. And again, I didn't pull the permit. I didn't know that it was my responsibility to put erosion blanket down. Had I known that a few hundred dollars in erosion blanket would have made it so I didn't have to come here today, absolutely, I would have done it. I didn't know. So, I don't know. I mean, that's really all I got to say, I guess. I mean, hindsight, I would have put it down if I would have known, if it was my responsibility.
How was the chain of communication supposed to work there? How, how should that have happened? Or is there, I'm, I'm a little bit confused why it didn't happen or how we might be where we are today here, Angie.
Mr. Chair, so Jerry and I talked about this, too. And even though a licensed contractor doesn't pull the permit, sometimes we have landowners pull their own permit, and then they hire a licensed contractor to do the work. So, it doesn't matter who obtains the permit. The, the intent of the contractor licensure is that a contractor, when they leave a site, they are going to make sure that they're complying with the ordinance. Chain of communication, ultimately, the property owner is always responsible for what happens on their property. That's why the property owner's not here today. But Jerry's here today because the county has a contractor license that says if you do work that doesn't meet the ordinance requirements, there's cause for revocation of your license. If there was a violation of the ordinance, which there was, we did communicate with Mr. Faye, Nick Newman, and our office communicated with Mr. Faye and Jerry, saying we have concerns with the erosion control or lack thereof on the property. Our department believes that the property owner and the contractor need to communicate to decide who is going to do that work on site. So, I, I understand what, what Jerry is saying, and it was an unusual circumstance with the property owner wanting to leave the minor permit kind of at bay and then request a major. But what should have happened is there should have been the $200 worth of erosion control blanket on site before the contractor left to make sure that we didn't have the, the erosion that occurred.
Can I say something else? And, and Mr. Persky, you see me often enough. You know that I pull permits if and when needed.
Correct.
I mean, our, our company spends a lot of money every year on permits, not just in Stearns, but other counties and townships as well. And I don't want any ill feelings with Angie, Nick, Dave Net, anybody because we work together quite a bit, even on county projects. And, I mean, if you were to say, hey, this is your warning, you know what you need to do. I mean, obviously, you're not going to see me here for this again. But you got to do what you got to do. I understand that. But I just, like I said, had I known, we wouldn't be having this conversation, so.
Yeah, Jerry, you've seen me enough, too, at the planning meetings. And, you know, there's a balance there as far as, you know, being able to give the customer what they want and, you know, what's in the best interest of the lake and the environment as well. And we try to, you know, find, find that balance. We want, you know, people to be able to enjoy the resources that they have and, but also the ability to preserve those resources for everybody in the future, for the future as, as well as that's concerned. So, I, I do appreciate working together, and I, and I would like to see a healthy relationship between the planning staff and the contractors and that we're all on the same page and are working for the same goal. You know, people want to be able to enjoy their lakeshore, but we also want to make sure that it's there for generations ahead, so, yeah. I don't know if the rest of the Board has any questions about the issue.
I have a clarifying question. So, at this point, has the blanket been put in place? It has? Okay.
And what's the stat? I, I was out at the property.
I thought that was the answer, but I wanted to make sure.
I, I was out at the property. What about the fencing?
Mr. Chair, I'll ask Nick Newman to comment on that. I believe he was out at the site last week.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I did make follow-up site visits to the property. Erosion control blanket is down, and the silt fence is now up and is being maintained as it should be. There's one more item with the retaining walls. There's a temporary retaining wall in place. Until the spring, we're going to be revisiting with the property owner to resolve that issue. Part of the erosion issue was mitigated with the extension of a temporary retaining wall, and that will be fully resolved in the spring. But as of right now, all of the erosion issues are taken care of.
And Jerry, what's your status with the property now? Are you working with the homeowner or not?
Nope. He packed up his cabin, went back to Texas, and isn't paying his bill.
Okay. All right. So, staff, then, as far as the condition of that property, the property owner will have to come back to us with a new permit. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, yes. Shelley, Nick, and I actually met with the property owner several weeks ago and authorized the, for Jerry to be able to go back out and finish the granite chips that he was talking about. And so, the landowner is going to be thinking and/or hopefully planning over the winter what he plans on doing with that temporary wall, and then working with us on obtaining necessary permits, to which, you know, is, is up to Jerry and Mr. Faye if they'll work together on that or not.
Now, for, for the Board here, that's, you know, each piece of property is unique, but, but that piece of property, from the center of the road all the way down to the lake, there's a considerable slope, and all that stuff moves that way. And I think he bit off more than he could chew when he came up with the plan that he did and, you know, was not appropriate, and that's why it failed. And, you know, Jerry, you see that stuff on the front end before, you know, somebody goes ahead and tries to do something, but they went ahead and did that. Yeah, that was not the best, best plan, so.
So, I think we technically, when you're ready, I mean, if we're ready to close the public hearing, but at some point we do. It would seem to me that perhaps the warning makes more sense than a revocation.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anything we can do to eliminate the gotcha.
Yeah.
Provisions of this.
Right.
How do we, you know, is there a way to get everybody on the same page? And stuff will happen. I mean, this gentleman is clearly familiar with the process, and that's helpful. And we don't know what the interface was like with the property owner, but I think what I'm hearing is, we had a reasonable try to get this right. It doesn't always work, you know?
Yeah, I, I agree, Jerry. We'll, I want to continue to work together, and I think we can do that, so. I don't, I think we're, pulling your license is a win for anybody, so.
No.
I appreciate it.
All right. I think I, did I close the public hearing? If not, I'll close it again.
Yeah, close it.
All right. We're now closed. Okay? So, I guess we do, we'll not need to take any action then?
So, I think move a warning versus a revocation.
Do you want to make that a formal?
Well, he's on the rec, he's on the record, you know. It's in the minutes of the county board now. Would that suffice? I mean, he's clearly aware of the situation. Staff's clearly aware. I would offer that if the horse isn't dead, it's certainly on its last gasp.
Mr. Chair, I think for closure, it would be to have a motion not to revoke the license. And per Commissioner Lenzmeyer's comment, the warning is, is on record.
Yeah.
So moved.
Yeah. Second, okay.
And the second, Commissioner Mergon, any further discussion?
The horse might survive this time.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And with these violations, it'd be nice if we can prevent them from happening. We've had a good number of them here in the past. Yeah.
I would love that to be the case.
Yeah, I know. And we'll do our best at planning, too, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item. It's not a public hearing, but we're going to hear from Great River Regional Library. Karen, welcome back.
Maybe we can be easier on them, huh?
Oh, I hope so, too.
I'm a little scared now.
We're not going to talk about your license.
Aaron's sweating bullets, back bears. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time this morning. I know you have a busy schedule. So, I'm Karen Poncak, Executive Director for Great River Regional Library.
And I'm Erin Murphy, Accounting and Distribution Supervisor for Great River.
Hi, Erin.
Hi, morning.
Are we moving our own slides? Yes. Okay, thank you. All right. So, July is when Great River Regional Library sets our budget, and that's why we've scheduled county meetings at all of our six counties to give you an idea of how that budget process unfolded this year. On the screen, you can see a snapshot of our region. We have 32 libraries in the six counties and also GRRL To Go out in Sartell Community Center. As of the beginning of the year, we had 108,641 active borrowers across the whole region. That means they use their card once to either check out books or reserve a computer in the last three years. There are a lot of other services that don't require a library card, so it's just one snapshot we have of library activity. In Stearns County, we have 157,000 people and 34,000 have an active library card. So, you can see all of the different libraries we have across the county. We actually have more in Stearns County than any of our other counties. So, a very high level of library use. St. Cloud is our largest location by far. Fun fact, all of the other libraries would fit inside of St. Cloud. It's that much bigger. So, you can see that it, it's one of the reasons we have such a substantial, substantial level of library use here in Stearns County. 1.2 million items were checked out last year. That's about a third of the activity across the whole region. St. Cloud is a picture here, just of St. Cloud alone. We had almost over half a million visits at the St. Cloud Public Library. And that means, you know, they may have come in from meeting rooms. They may have come in just to read the newspaper. There's a lot of people coming into that building. I think the last time we ran a stat, it's something like three people, one person every three minutes or something like that. So, it's a very busy place. Wireless activity is starting to catch up to our computer uses. GRRL To Go, oh, yeah, sure.
Just back up. How, and, and those numbers compared to years past? How, how are those comparing? Are those all up, flat?
Visits are down. Items checked out are pretty, it, it's hard to measure St. Cloud individually because we had the fire year where we were closed for three months. So, that number is not as high as we have seen in the past. It peaked at a million items a year. So, it has come down in terms of physical items.
Okay.
Computer uses were pretty steady last year, but overall are on a long-term decline. Wireless was substantially increasing year over year. Last year was more flat. So, it depends on what you're measuring. We don't have programming on this slide, but that is actually an area we've seen the largest increase in activity across the region, partly because of legacy funding and partly just that's what people are coming for.
And, and, yeah, the wireless, let's go back, the wireless connections?
Yeah.
Your, are those both inside and outside?
Yeah. I, I mean, this, this is just St. Cloud, but if you go back to this number, the wireless connections there, you can see some of those in a smaller library. You know, we're only open 20 hours in, like, Belgrade. I know people sit outside of Belgrade because it's the only Wi-Fi hotspot in town. So, it, it, there are lots of ways people use the library.
Right. And I, I mean, that, and that is a tremendous asset for those communities because...
Yes. It's probably one of the fastest connections out there. I know when I was working the desk a couple of years ago, there was a guy who actually had come from Meeker County trying to download something because otherwise he would have used all his data in order to update something on his computer, so.
Right. And I very much appreciate, and the public appreciates the ability to do that.
Thanks. We're, we're happy to offer it. We're rolling out a new service this year called Print To Go, which will allow people to actually print from their own device, either from home or at the library, and then just send their copies and pay for them at the library. So we're really excited about being able to roll that out. We have it in about a third of the libraries right now with the goal of having it at all locations by the end of the year.
Okay.
This is GRRL To Go. We've talked a little bit about it here, and you can see the photo of the locker system out in Sartell. In some ways, this is our most access, in some ways, it's our least. The Sartell Community Center is open a lot more than any location that we have. It means anyone can pick up a book there whenever that community center is open. On the flip side, we only deliver two days a week, and the locker has forty-four locker capacity. So it's limited in the speed in which materials are delivered, but in terms of being able to get something when you're getting off work at midnight, or ten o'clock, I guess, you'd be able to go pick it up, so. This is a snapshot of our budget, and just to remind you, the Joint Powers Agreement says we have to have our budget set by August 1st. The Great River Board meets and finalizes that in July. We start talking about it with Finance Committee in March. And the formula is established in the Joint Powers Agreement, so it's based on one-third borrowers, one-third population, and one-third net tax capacity among the six counties.
So for 2020, Stearns, or, excuse me, the overall Great River budget is a one point one one overall increase. But for Stearns County, it's a point one four three decrease. Most of our revenue, I would say the majority of it comes from the county signatories at seventy-five point six percent. Regional Library Basic System Support is a state grant that we get, and that's usually around the one point five to one point six million dollar range, which we'll talk about in a second, too. And then the third biggest one would be funds miscellaneous that come from patrons' accounts that owe money for lost and not returned materials. ROBSS, I wanted to mention, that is a volatile number. It's not highly volatile, but it is volatile due to equalization. Karen can speak to a little bit more to equalization, but we guess this number every year, an educated guess, and we were within ten thousand dollars of our actual entitlement from the state. So that's actually a really good, good place to be because it can fluctuate between a hundred thousand dollars, and that would cause us to rethink the budget, but equalization, if Karen wants to.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit. Equalization is one of the four factors that determine how much Great River gets from one year to the next, and it's determined based on the population and the adjusted net tax capacity of each county in relation to all of the other counties. And this year, something odd happened with the formula where our larger counties actually saw an increase in equalization, and the smaller counties saw a decrease, partly because there were fewer people per adjusted net tax capacity dollar shift. And so that part of the formula is the part that shifts the most, and we're one of the few regions that receive equalization for all six counties, and so it makes it very difficult to guess what that number will come in at in September. It's about one point five million dollars right now, and we have been pursuing legislation to make that a more stable number. We're part of the education bill, and so even when we get to the committee level, which we did last session, we have a hard time making it through because all of the dollars are going through to K-12, and at the end of the day, we're just not the highest priority in the room. So we're continuing to fight that fight, but anything you can do to help would be appreciated because that, over time, we have been seeing a loss in those ROBSS numbers at Great River over the last five years. We had one high swing, and then after that, it's been a little bit less every year.
So on this slide here, it's just giving you a snapshot of all the counties and where Stearns County lies in regards to all the others. For 2020, it's two point three million dollars. So it went down roughly three hundred thousand, or, excuse me, three thousand. Which equates to that decrease that you're going to see for 2020 budget. One thing I did want to point out is your population increased. Registered users roughly maintained, actually went down a little bit, but your net tax capacity grew by seven million. So all those factors included and then thrown into the formula, most of this shift came from Sherburne County this year for the 2020 budget. All their numbers were up. So that helped out all the other counties with their annual contribution. And then this slide here is just basically a blown-up view of just Stearns County, so you can see from 2010 to 2020 where your contribution has went up and down due to the formula.
This is a real fun slide we'd like to show, too, because we're really proud of the fact that we're one of the most efficient regions in the state of Minnesota. You can see what each county pays per capita within the formula itself. And Great River, with just the operating funds, is funded at about nineteen dollars and forty-six cents per resident in the count, in the six counties. When you look at total revenue, which includes like what the cities pay to, you know, maintain the facilities year to year and add that in, which we have to do for our state reporting purposes, we're funded at about twenty dollars and eighty cents per capita. And the most recent data from the federal level is the statewide Minnesota is funded at forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents per capita average operating for a library in the state. So we're at about half of that, but when people look at our services, we're on the high end of, you know, one of the largest collections, some of the best offerings online. And we're really happy that we're able to offer that level of efficiency to the residents and to the state of Minnesota as a partner within our reciprocal borrowing arrangements. So we wanted to share that good news with you all, and if you, if you want more detail on how those numbers are arrived, we can certainly talk more about that. And wanted to thank you all for your support. Commissioner Lenzmeyer's been serving on our board for several years now, and we appreciate him, especially, he was just out of fund development training last week, and he's an active member of our Library Safety and Security Committee as well. Zuriya Anjum, Jeff Bertram, Framan Ramler, and Carlin Forner are your other representatives, and they're all very active members of the Great River Board, so thank you for that.
Karen, last year you guys had the patrons' attended program.
Oh, yeah, we didn't throw that one in there this year.
I was just curious if that, is that same about same?
I actually pulled it out, so I have it on my slide here. We had thirteen hundred forty programs with a hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-four attendees. So that's just a totally separate area of the business. With the budget presentation, because so much is driven by the borrower numbers, we wanted to make sure we focused a little more this time.
Okay, thanks.
Love, love the system, so thank you and your staff for all the great work. I was curious, too, about eBooks or audiobooks usage. As somebody who goes in and gets items, but also uses that, and it made my bank account better when books miss, you know, just disappear as opposed to be getting a fine.
We didn't talk about that here either. There's so many things that we do.
I know, you do a lot, but I'm not saying that's probably continuing the...
But no, that's a really good question because it is a pretty, the people that use it really use it a lot. It's about six percent of our total circulation. We assumed at one point that that meant it was six percent of the borrowers, but when we did the user, non-user survey last year with St. Cloud State, we learned about twenty-three percent of people said they use our digital collection. So why it's only six percent of the usage is something we're digging into. It's been a bit of a challenge. McMillan, just recently, I don't know if you've been following the news, has done some things that have made it harder for libraries to offer their eBooks as a publisher. That's, it's more expensive for us to license that content and offer it to patrons than it is for them to purchase it, so it's not as easy as getting the ninety-nine cent download from Audible. And so the dollars that it takes to maintain that collection is harder. Some items in the collection only check out twenty-six times, and then we have to buy it again. And so we weigh that between buying a physical copy of the book and when we know eighty-eight percent of the people who come in the door want the books. It's a real tough balance. That being said, we have been increasing our fund development efforts, and fifty percent of what we raise go directly to the collection itself, and so we've been looking at whether we should funnel more of those donations toward maintaining the digital collection.
Well, and as part of that, I mean, I, like I said, I use them, so I certainly personally appreciate that. I think, given what our weather's like, I think as more seniors become used to using eBooks, among other things, there's, my mom's a new resident, so it's like, Mom, yes, in your Kindle, you can check out books, you know? So, you know, that's a great thing. And then, I know there's so many other things you could talk about, there's not much time. The challenges that you've had continuing to really offer and enhance the research capabilities, I mean, there's some really cool opportunities that get used, and I appreciate what you said about the education committee. Maybe the jurisdiction needs to be changed because it is a very hard thing to make sure the funds are really coming back the way they need to be for communities, but part of it is that, that technology cost that helps us with really being able to access materials we just couldn't otherwise.
Right, well, and, you know, we continue to see the landscape changing. One of our most popular databases right now is Lynda.com, where you can go online and learn about Excel or project management or leadership or music. I mean, there's so many things. But that platform, up until July, was telling us if you want to continue this subscription, it will require anybody who has it to have a LinkedIn account. And in terms of data privacy, that is just like not something we can do as a library. They've kind of changed their tune a little bit and said, well, we're going to think about it, but it's going to be a tough decision because it's one of our more, most popular offerings. But for us to say, in order to use it at the library, you have to have a LinkedIn account, and by default, that means your private information is now part of a, or public, your private information is now owned by the corporation who owns LinkedIn, that's just not something we can do from a philosophical standpoint. So it's, it's a very tough landscape right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a couple of things, Karen. You said hard copy is still, is roughly around eighty-eight percent of your usage?
That's what the survey said.
Okay, all right, yeah. And I was just wondering, if we take a look, though, of hard copy and we look at the digital and electronic that's available, usership is then, is up, though, if you put the two together, is it not, as far as?
It depends on what metrics you stack. You know, if you put wireless on top of internet, on top of books, on top of program attendance, like, that's not necessarily all the same people. And I think that's one of our challenges, too, is what our core business activity metrics were ten years ago are very different than, I mean, wireless wasn't even on the list.
Correct.
One of the things the state is now asking for, for our state reports, is also web traffic. And just last year, in the state of Minnesota alone, with only thirty percent of libraries reporting, there were more website visits to library websites than there were people walking into the door of the library. So again, our business model is changing, and how we measure it and tell that story is a bit of a challenge because it, what we say we're doing now is probably going to be very different even in five years.
Yeah, and, but, but you are seeing the folks that were saying that the brick and mortar libraries are going to be disappearing and the books are going to be disappearing. That's not happening?
No, 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 it's just changing a lot.
Yeah, sure. And then also the To Go. I'm glad to see the success that that has. How about other areas that might do something with the To Go? Is that possible? I'm just thinking Rice or Randall or any of those other communities that might benefit from something like that.
We are actually going to be talking about that at our October work session with the library board. We're in the midst of finalizing our next iteration of the library development plan, and then we will be heading into our strategic planning for the next five years. And part of the library development plan last time was where GRRL To Go came from as a concept. One of the things we'll be talking about is maybe extending Book Drop Service as a pilot somewhere. But where it goes to test it is something we have to talk about. And then the Sartell pilot was a three-year pilot, and we're in year two. So the board at that time said we wouldn't extend that anywhere else until we know how we end up. So we got another year on that one.
And would you need to necessarily use a public entity for that? Could you, could you put one, let's say, in a mall or out of, out of business? Is that possible?
Is it possible, yes. Is that the right direction to go? That's what we'd have to discuss because how do you decide where it goes? I think that's, that's the biggest challenge because there's always going to be a capacity limit, whether it's how many things fit in the dock or how many vehicles we have to have for delivery or how much time it takes on the road or how many full-time drivers can you hire because that's a really difficult position to fill sometimes. So we'll have those discussions, but we don't have a, this is what's going to happen yet. The other To Go service that we're piloting is another one that came through our fund development dollars called Wi-Fi To Go out in Peers, and they're actually checking Wi-Fi hotspots onsite at Peers to see how that works. So we are using that To Go label on a couple of different services that we've been offering.
Okay, all right. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
I'll give 'til it hurts.
I don't think I'm going to ask a follow-up question.
Well, have a good day. We'll move on to public works. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. Jeff Miller, Assistant County Engineer. My first item today is to request approval and authorize final payment for our 2019 Seal Coat contract.
Okay.
The final amount is nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay. Move for approval. Okay, motion by Commissioner Mergen?
I'll second that.
Second, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any discussion on the seal coating? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
Okay. My next item is to request approval and authorize the final payment for SP 073070018. It's our ground-in wet reflective pavement edgelines that we did in various locations throughout the county. And our final amount there is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Commissioner Clark?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, just a quick question. Are we seeing, do you think, a PayMac on that as far as longevity, as far as repainting then?
The expected life of these is approximately five years.
Yeah.
As opposed to when we just do our latex striping, we probably get a couple of years out of that.
Yeah.
So definitely, it's, and plus they're ground-in, so it, you know, helps prevent plow damage to it. And so, yeah, it's, it's...
It's pricier, but actually...
Correct, and it's, and it's also a, it's a federal highway safety improvement program.
Okay.
So we do get federal funding.
That's good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is to request authorization to set a public hearing for changes to the Stearns County Ordinance 478, which is our right-of-way ordinance. These changes are proposed due to requirements from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. We had a recent audit of our MS4 program, which is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Program. It's basically our stormwater program that we have in place for work that happens in our right-of-way. So basically, utility companies working in our right-of-way, developers that are doing work adjacent and inside of our right-of-way, were mandated by PCA to monitor those construction events and so on. And those, those permit requirements change probably every five years. There's a new permitting requirements that come out. And so this, these changes were changes that were recommended to us by PCA through their audit of our program. So basically, just asking that we be allowed to set a public hearing to consider those changes.
Okay. Motion to set that public hearing?
I'll move to, I'll ask the staff to set that public hearing. I'll second.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, discussion? Say, earlier in the year, we had some issues with right-of-way with, we had some issues with right-of-way with a number of people, I think we were marking, establishing right-of-way at some of our county highways. Are we going to continue to identify and mark our right-of-way throughout the county?
Yeah, we've been, we've been steadily putting signage up just to remind farmers, you know, where they're supposed to end their crops. So that's... you know, where they're supposed to end their crops. So that's something that we've kind of been a little more proactive in doing in the past couple of years.
And I think it's a matter of maybe consistency, too, because you can see some places where they're plowing around the power lines in some place where they're set back away from the power lines and-
Correct, yes.
And for some folks, though, that have maybe been using a piece of property for 40 years, it's a bit of shell shock for them to say, oh, wait a minute, I thought that was mine. Oh, you allowed it to, you know, to go on for such a long time.
Yes, it definitely can be a contentious relationship there.
Commissioner Notch, have you?
No, I figured we were going to finish voting on it and then talk about these things.
Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead. Are you going to change your vote now?
Well, no.
All those in favor-
We're getting off topic of what-
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now, do you have something to say?
Yes. We're under miscellaneous, I guess.
Okay.
If Jeff's finished.
I, well, I had, I do have one miscellaneous item, but we can-
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. Jody sent you all a email a few days ago from the Highway 23 Coalition. They're seeking priority projects. And she gave you her three priorities. Number one being the reduced conflict or J-turn at Belclaire Drive on Highway 23. Her second priority was the Foley to Foreston two-to-four lane conversion in Benton County. And the third priority was the Casoff 55 overpass over the BNSF Railroad in Candy Ojai County. And she's just seeking feedback from all of you by October 12th. She has to have those comments in, so.
Okay. That Highway 23 Coalition continues to grow. And the push over the past year and a half maybe has been to the northeast. It's nice to see those counties coming on board and, and a couple of those changes. If you drive that section of 23 towards Duluth, you know it's quite dangerous. And, yeah, we're looking to improve those things, so, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I had a resident ask me about ditch mowing, where, you know, some farmers cut the county ditches and bail them. Is there a procedure, a process where if they want to continue doing that, the county doesn't have to mow the ditches? You know, like usually in the fall, I think they mow them for sort of snow blows across. But this farmer had said that the last couple of times now, but before, he used to tell the local garage, you know, that he'll cut the ditch and bail it. But then now, they just came again and cut it. Obviously, it's pretty wet, so, you know, he didn't cut it for hay yet, but-
Well, yeah, I guess I would recommend that he continue to have those discussions with the, with the, with the garage, the supervisor in that area, the area supervisor. We, we typically are restricted to the top cut that we typically try to do by around the Fourth of July. But then we, we're not allowed to cut the rest of the ditch until, I believe it's August, for letting the animals nest and all that. Farmers aren't restricted by that. They can, they can mow that.
So that's probably why they've always been ahead of it. But this year, with all the rain-
Correct.
You know, the county probably got ahead of them, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll mention to him that he should just-
Sure.
Stop at the local shop.
Yep.
Okay.
Jeff, I just had one other thing. It's nice to see that roundabout on 120 and County Road 4 opened up. Yeah. However, somebody had asked me, actually, two different people had asked me, we've got a 40 mile an hour speed limit sign coming from County Road 4 into that roundabout. And maybe 100 to 200 yards later, it is a recommended 15 mile an hour speed as you enter the roundabout. And I'm just wondering about, should, could that sign, or should that sign be moved backwards or a little bit? You know which one I'm referring to?
Yes, I, I am. And I did go out and look at that. And, and we had them backwards at, at first. We had to, we had to switch the order of those. Typically, you know, MINDOT sets our speed limit-
Right.
...locations for us. And so that might be an area where we want to look at that, maybe request MINDOT look at that again. I've also had a complaint in the opposite direction where people turning out of, not Bromo, there's another one just north of there, and the, and the N-40 is right there. And they'd like to see that extended further to the north as well. So it might be an opportunity to, to reevaluate that now that the roundabout is there.
Yeah, my concern is that it might be 40 there, but we don't want to encourage people if they're going less than that to speed up to 40 because there's, you know, 100 yards, they're going to have to slow it down to 15. So, yeah, it's just, it's a little bit clumsy. And, yeah, so-
I can discuss it with Jody. We can take a look at that.
Sure. Okay.
One other thing that was brought to my attention. Apparently, in Crow Lake Township, I think when Highway 55 was being done, the township had to sign approval for a haul road, which the county did, too, because I think they accessed County Road 19 between Belgrade and Bruton. And then they had to dispute with a contractor with fixing the part of the township road. Where their concern was, is, you know, the, how MINDOT, everybody signs off, you know, they had to acknowledge that it was going to be the haul road and supposedly it was supposed to be maintained. And they came to the end here and it was dispute where, I believe, MINDOT said that everything was fine. But, you know, they sent pictures of the gravel road and it was all, you know, it needed Class V put back on it. And I'm just wondering if maybe there's a conversation that can be had. And it might come up at town officers meeting, too, where the, the townships can have equal access if there's issues, instead of just, you know, somebody above them maybe signing off and then they're kind of stuck with fixing the road that was used as a haul road to get gravel, you know, to gravel or millings, whatever, to and from a pit.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that specific-
I think it got resolved. Angie sent me an email Friday. I think they, Dunix agreed they would re-gravel the road now. But, and maybe it's a conversation when Jody's back with Angie where we sit down and maybe there's a process-
Sure.
-that can help these townships, so they're not hanging on some of these projects.
Sure. Yeah. I'll bring that to Jody.
Thanks. And then Jeff, we had a person in here testifying about the stop signs at controlled intersection at five points. And you folks have gone ahead and put double stop signs now in there. And since then, we haven't, I've not had any complaints. So I'm hoping that people seeing two stop signs are going to stop. They only stopped once, but if they want to stop twice, they can.
Sure.
So, but, you know, it's, at least anyway, that hopefully that'll make that safer in a wise, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Board members, we have a break scheduled on here. Otherwise, we have human services. And then commissioners, we'll be done. Do we need a break? Do we want a break? Yes? Okay. We're going to take five minutes. There, if I shake it hard enough, it does come back on again. Okay, we'll move on with human services. Good morning.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'm Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator. And there are two consent items on the Human Services Board agenda item today, which are items H1 and H2 on pages 77 and 97. And I'm available for questions.
Okay. Questions on Human Services consent agenda? Commissioner Clark?
Second.
Commissioner Notch, any discussion on those? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. There's one regular item on the Human Services Board agenda item today, and it is I-1 on page 99. And it's the 2020-2021 Minnesota Family Investment Program Teen Parent Visit Grant Award. And I have with me today Janet Golagowski, who's the Division Director of Gateway Services, along with Brenda Mahoney, who's the Division Director of Family and Children's Services, and Renee Fraundeanst, who's the Division Director of Public Health. And they are here to discuss one of the ways in which we, in Human Services, are moving further upstream towards prevention, connecting public health, child protection services, and public assistance to assist families before a crisis occurs, is, reduces trauma to families, and also saves taxpayer dollars. So we're going to talk about one of those initiatives that we're working on. And I will let Ms. Golagowski start.
Thank you.
Oh, wow. Oh, good.
We have a little theater for you this morning, a bit.
If you're going to be last on the agenda, you must have some props.
Do I need to break through that brick wall?
That is perfect. We're going to ask you, Mr. Chair, we invite you to help us tear down the wall.
Oh.
Very good. So if we can go ahead and get you to tear down that wall-
Break the wall.
You want me to tear down that?
Yes. Fantastic. Thank you.
Oh.
So our program actually does illustrate how we would like to break down those walls. The wall I need to break down here apparently is how to figure out technology.
The PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint. There we go. Hey, now we have that. That's awesome. So this program, actually, we're calling Graduate Eight. And Graduate Eight, as Melissa indicated, is a combined program that helps us tear down the walls. We have a community connector worker. We have nurses and our social workers, all working together to support teen moms in the challenges they face towards successful high school graduation. Our program assigns our moms to meet with our workers, with our nurses, and with our social workers. We know that high school graduation can be a gateway or foundational piece of future socio-economic upwards movement. Some of the barriers or challenges that teen moms and their families face when trying to meet successful graduation can be school attendance, just getting to school, navigating car seats, and childcare, and showing up. Sometimes it can be easier just not to show. So our workers will help with that. Again, childcare, doctor appointments, baby wellness, and mom and baby nutrition are really important aspects to developing that bond with the child, as well as mom and her support system throughout our schools, as well as the childcare and the doctors and clinics that they need to go to.
So the board may recall that earlier this year, they approved the Community Health Assessment and the Community Health Improvement Plan. That's the assessment and the plan that needs to be put together by local public health agencies, as well as the St. Cloud Hospital and the hospitals that are served by Centricare. And two of the priorities that came out of that is improving mental health and then nurturing or building families. So this fits really well into those priorities that we determined through community input. What the board may not recall is that the fifth priority is looking at assisting or, yeah, assisting families to become more stable financially. And the three areas that were identified through that was in a livable wage, making sure that they had the skills that were needed, and that there was, that there was affordable housing. So this program fits very well into what the community identified as issues and where the plan for the community to work together to make a difference. The other way that it dovetails well into are the services that public health provides through our home visiting programs. We have three programs that we're using, the Healthy Families America, and the Nurse Family Partnership. And we're using some work around circle of security with these families as well. So they, they focus on the nurturing the family. So it's meeting with pregnant women. So we like to get the referrals from these teens when they're still pregnant. And then actually working with them to not only bond to the baby, but in conjunction with the social worker and the connector, working on financial stability and creating self-sufficiency over time, so that those families actually are successful in the future.
So that brings us to the other area and concern. Do you want to move forward?
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
Is what's the long-term goal? And our long-term goal is generational family stability. Child protection really is, we're excited about doing this. Quite often, we're reactionary system. We're after something happens. This is an opportunity to work together to do what we've been trying to do, to move upstream and to be more preventative and proactive. We know from research that adolescent parenting can have adverse effects on a child's development, social and emotional well-being, and ultimately, their lifelong ability- social and emotional well-being, and ultimately, their lifelong ability to reach their full potential. Teen parenting can, in fact, as, as you heard, the educational level attained by that young parent, and the parent's economic stability, that in turn affects the, not only the parent, but the child, and also the resources that are available in the community, their ability to contribute back to the community. From research, we know that there's an elevated risk to the child, to a child born to a teenage parent, and that part of that risk is the repeating of the pattern of less education, more health issues, increased unemployment, and ultimately, early parenthood by that young child, too. That can contribute to the cycle of poverty for debt, for future generations. The exciting thing about this is that we know from research that promoting positive parenting among young parents increases their knowledge of child development, it assures access to services and education and employment opportunities, and that in turn buffers the risk to that child. And our best hope for doing this is that by working across the different disciplines, we can provide comprehensive services and supports to teen parents, we can combat the risks, identify the barriers, ultimately break down those walls, and help the teenage parents reach their potential. Our best hope is that we'll help the children then also reach their full potential, and instead of having that cycle of generational poverty, we can result in generational family stability.
So, if you have questions, we can certainly answer those for you.
I would just sum it up, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that more and more in Human Services, taking all the divisions, having all the workers working across the lines, and we're leading with yes. So, if there's an issue in the community, whoever's available in the entire department goes out, and we've had several huge examples of that this week as well, where, you know, even in public health, not used to dealing with maybe a crisis at the very moment, steps up to the plate, Children's Services comes in, Public Assistance comes over. Across the department, we're just dealing with whatever the issues are, and then also trying to prevent things from happening before they're in the deep end services of either commitments, or Child Protection Services, the most expensive services that are the most traumatizing. So, with that, if there are any questions about this particular grant or other things we're available.
Okay, questions? Nod, I thank you for all the things you do. These are very challenging situation for these teen moms, and as far as completing, you know, their high school education, you know, that can be a challenge. Are we getting cooperation from the schools quite well? Hopefully, you know, they can make accommodations with flexibility and requirements, and making sure that, you know, they can do the best they can for that young mother as well, so...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I can just share that, a lot of our referrals do come to us prenatally, and they typically start with the school nurse. So, the school's very much engaged in, in getting those parents the need, the needed help they have.
Yeah, that can be quite a challenge, we appreciate that, yeah.
Mr. Chair, also one other comment on that, we had the opportunity, that supervisors from Child Protection went along with County Attorney's Office, to speak to all the schools this year about truancy and educational neglect, and it was another opportunity to say, here's some of the things that we're doing, and to offer, and reach out for the partnership.
Yeah, good, good, all right, well, thank you.
I just wanna thank Melissa and her staff for helping with the situation in Albany with the older lady and her husband at the nursing home. I did talk to her on Sunday, and she was very appreciative.
Thank for all that work behind the scenes, there's a lot going on that the public doesn't know about.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, this, this will, the only thing else I, under, I guess, Commissioner concerns, it's more appropriate to do it now, had an opportunity over the last two weeks to see our incredible staff present both to Community Corrections, and then Public Health statewide on our Community Action Team, not just the Community Action Team, really, the kinds of changes they're talking about, and I, you know, some of the things may seem intuitive, but it's really challenging when you've got different programmatic requirements, et cetera, and what is happening, the transformation that's happening interdepartmentally, and then with the community partners, and it's just really great, there's a lot of kudos going on, so, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that brings us down to the bottom of the agenda, issues by Commissioner. Randy?
I'm just gonna remind people of the due date for the second half property tax payment is October 15th, so...
I'll write that down.
There you go.
Okay, our property, that's due the 14th or 15th?
The 15th.
Okay, I got that.
People can pay online, so it's a good way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Two things, we have the Municipal League Meeting next Tuesday in Albany, Todd Farrell starts it, well, dinner's at six, and meeting's at 6:30, and then, Mike, you probably got, well, we probably all got the notice from Andrew, was it Curly, for the St. Joe, don't they have a one o'clock today for mid-coast?
One o'clock today.
With their big internet news or something?
I'm hoping to make it there, too, so...
Okay. Nothing?
No.
Okay, all right, Jeff?
Steve got mine. They changed my medic, Joe, they changed my medication.
Oh, okay, good. We all appreciate that.
Yet another longer, I guess, I already got to two months.
Okay, Mike?
You remember, you're on your own for, for transportation, but we're gonna reconvene out at the service center, so you can tour the new space.
Oh, looking forward to seeing that, okay, good. Last week I was out in Litchfield, Vibrant had opened up their plan for new fiber out in that area, and it was encouraging to see them get that out to not only Mika County, but also, they're gonna have service available for Kimball, and also the lower part of the county, Eden Valley, Watkins, and Lake Coronas, so, yeah, encouraging to see that happening. So, other than that, I think we got a couple days of good weather yet, and then we'll have winter poundage. We didn't ask of what the salt and sand supply was, but I, hopefully, the barns will fall.
Hopefully, we don't have to ask them.
No, we don't. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Commissioner Notch, Commissioner Clark, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.